A few minutes late. That was me calling everyone's want. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last week's meeting.
To whom?
Second.
Corrections or comments?
It's staying. I didn't get it, so I don't know what it says.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public comment. I think we're commented out. Moving on then. Recognitions from the superintendent.
Just a real quick one. I shared this with the staff earlier today. Yesterday, yesterday we had a challenging day, you know, pulling the admin team together to look at, you know, how do we respond to having to potentially cut $828,000. And I cannot emphasize how proud I was of an administrative team. Yeah, too, too often, I think, a team comes together and it's dysfunctional in how they interact and everybody's trying to protect their own, not trying to sort of step back and have an entire team look at the greater good for the district. And, you know, I thought it was probably the most functional discussion I've ever had with a group of people in the world's, it seemed to be the most impossible task. And, you know, I really can't thank Sam Hline and Brian Daniels and Bill Burkhead and Adam O'Shea and Carla Blanchard and Joan Goggins and Katie and Deb Morgan. I thought it was a great conversation. It was painful, but I really appreciate the efforts that they put in. And, you know, it's bad when I, I've always, I promised the group, I broke a promise. I promised them I'll never, I'll never put out an email to you saying, "Plan on staying for two meals." But I sent out an email to the group saying, "Plan on staying for two meals." And it was, it was a long day.
Going on to item, thanks Scott. Long night also. E, student representatives from the high school. Lane, E. Welcome again.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. Okay, so I have only good things to say. All right. So first, to start out, just some things that have been going on at the high school. We have 14 students that started internships with the second semester beginning at either the elementary school or a local business. So they go out every, or every other day during their period and they drive off to wherever they're going. Also, the winter sports have ended and the hockey team made the tournament, so we're excited to watch that. And with winter sports ending, the first spring practices will begin on March 16th. Also, Greece, as we know with their six-hour rehearsals, is coming together very nicely. An opening night is Wednesday, March 11th. Tomorrow, we have our second mock trial against Sturgis West. And then, just to talk about our two trips that happened over February vacation. Firstly, the last weekend of February vacation, right a few days ago, the stand group from school took a trip to Washington DC with 20 students who lobbied for human rights. And they said they had a wonderful time. They went from, they left on Friday, they flew there, and then they came back on Sunday. And Mr. Dixon chaperoned, as well as Ms. Schiller and apparent Mrs. Lyford. And then finally, I don't want to step on your toes, but we also took a trip to Madrid, Paris and Rome over February vacation. And we had a really wonderful time, just to name a few of the places that we went to. In Paris, we saw the Eiffel Tower, the Louvre. We went to Versailles, we went to the Notre Dame Cathedral. In Madrid, we saw the Royal Palace, just to name one place. And then in Rome, we saw the Spanish Steps, St. Peter's Basilica and the Vatican. And I just want to personally thank, we had four chaperones with us on the trip. Mr. Smeltzer and Ms. Simmons, as well as Ms. Smith-Fay from the middle school and apparent Mrs. McDonald. Without them, it wouldn't have been as successful as it was. And their time and effort really paid off and showed throughout the whole trip. We, we really had a great time and it's funny, 23 of us went and we actually now have a message where we're all talking constantly. So it's funny, we really got close and we're so grateful that you provided us this opportunity. And Kelly's in the audience, she went too. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, lady.
Thanks.
Great experience.
Yes.
Our Montemoy Middle School student representatives. Come up, boys and, and girls. And introduce yourselves.
I'm Isabella.
Hi, Isabella.
I'm, oh, hi Noah.
Hi, Noah.
I'm Trevor Russell.
Hi, Trevor. I'm sorry?
Katie Sandborn.
Hi, Katie. Who would like to go first? Okay.
So to celebrate Valentine's Day, our school, the Friday before vacation, we, everybody, almost everybody wore red or pink to celebrate the holiday. And fifth grade showed the most spirit, which is my grade. So that was pretty exciting for me. And also, speaking of fifth grade, today, Audubon Science Presentations came to the school to talk about the food chain, herbivores and carnivores and also stuff like that. So that's, that's going on in fifth grade and. So also to celebrate Valentine's Day, we sold chocolate roses to the entire school. We sold around 1,088 roses, but we could have sold twice as many because we had to turn away people after the second of selling. Every student in the school received a rose. The student senate wanted everyone to be included, so we made sure that every student got a rose. Everyone knows it feels bad to be left out, so it was important to make sure that didn't happen. We didn't want anyone to feel bad or feel like, like an outsider. The spirit of kindness and inclusion was overwhelmingly present that day.
Good job.
Most people know about the school evacuation on Friday, or last Friday. And some of the students were nervous, but the teachers did a good job keeping us distracted and relaxed. And many students felt that a little information about what was happening might have made them feel a little better.
Thanks, Noah. This guy comes with a story. Chairman's privilege. This is my grandson Trevor Lodell Russell. And I can't help but think what a great gift it is for me personally. Six, seven, eight months ago, his dad, Mark, was invited to be the closing commencement speaker at Howard High School's last joint graduation. And if I might say so myself, he hit a home run. And here we are, full circle, and Trevor is here to pinch-hit for his father. Go ahead, Mark. No, I'm sorry. Nice and loud.
Hi, so we are starting pennies for patients from March 9th to March 31st. And it's raising money for leukemia and lymphoma society by collecting spare change. And we'll have boxes out, so if like anyone has a spare penny or anything like that, you can put it in and that can maybe help save a life. The money goes towards research and to help patients. And over 30,000 other schools participate. Last year, Howard Middle School and Charm Elementary participated.
Good job, everybody. Good job. There's more?
We just wanted to do some grade reports. So in sixth grade, in geography, we, we students made animotos, which are kind of picture slides. You can kind of, you can choose like music to go in the background and the kind of style that you can use. My country was Venezuela and we had about, I'd say probably 12 pictures. And I, I learned a lot about Venezuela because the animotos were after the essays that we did on our country in South America, because that's what we were learning at the time. So we did an animoto on the country that we had, so, yeah.
All right, this is our last thing, or second to last.
Can you do it like a rap?
You're pushing it, Brian.
So. We did book presentations in seventh grade and we, there was three different books that three different groups read. And then we had presentations such as diary entries, videos, board games. You could do any of those three things and more to present how about the book. And we went into groups with that and each group did a certain amount of chapters, like each person in each group. And that was very cool to see all the projects together at the end.
And all the grades practiced and got to use the part test for both English and math. And we did it for, I think, three days, or I think two or three, so that was helpful.
Good job, everybody. Thank you for coming. Reports and discussions, the European field trip. Padu.
Let me begin by saying that even though this trip took a certain amount of effort, meetings, emails, phone calls, double-checking and triple-checking passports, I have to say that it was totally worth it. And not only for me as a teacher and as a parent, but for the 23 kids that came with us on this trip. And I have to say, when they came home, most of them were still saying, "I wish I were back there." So, you know, overall, it was just a wonderful experience for all of us. And so what we'd like to do tonight is just share with you some of the high points.
Okay, you have to remember, it's three countries and nine dates. We were off and right. So we were lucky enough, we got out on time on Friday. You know, the storm was building, the precipitation had all about. And we arrived, well, shortly thereafter, in Madrid. So we were fortunate to have a great tour guide, Elena, she knew three languages. We were three countries well. And the kids now are thinking about doubling up on languages. They're so excited about being able to know a few phrases in French and Spanish, use their Latin and also make all their history connections. So I'll try to be quick. This is our first official group picture, part of the Prado. We went to Bullfight Stadium. Kids love to go, so I don't know what it is. Soccer stadium, Real Madrid plays there. And then we were fortunate to make a plane trip to Paris. And we did a lot of connection with history. Lane represent, I told you that we went to the Royal Palace in Madrid. We saw the Statue of Cervantes, the Plaza de España, Puerto del Sol, Plaza Mayor. All these places they've been reading about and talking about for years in Spanish class came alive. And then next it was to Notre Dame, Champs-Elysees. Loved tours with guides from the country. Very informative. We felt very special being able to walk into Colosseum with our own private guide and Vatican and Palacio Real. It was a wonderful trip, you can see that.
And let me just add, not only did, you know, our students that went on the trip get to experience this, but Betsy had decided that we should do some mini-projects of our itinerary with the rest of our classes.
So you did that the week before.
They could all participate vicariously, that was our word of the day, as a substitute for those of us that were actually going to be on the trip. And many of the kids in our classes who unfortunately could not go are certainly thinking about it in the future, whether it's on another trip or a semester abroad in college. So I think we've, you know, achieved both goals, not only with the students that were on the trip, but the students in the classes.
We've generally had a lot of interest now in travel and making these connections. Some of the kids were like, "I really missed out on a good trip. I want to make those connections with my classmates." So let's all board this in. Happy teachers, happy chaperones. It's very important, very, very important to show that. And we connected with Twitter throughout the whole trip. Bob and I posted on Twitter every day, so parents could make sure they saw their kids happy and it was great. Really good.
So they got to experience it as well.
Good feedback, yeah, so they could experience it too. Okay, I just gotta hit the right thing here. So we had a couple of students who their dream since they were seven and eight years old was to go to the top of the Eiffel Tower. And there was some discussion whether or not we could do it. And I was like, "No, we have to do this." These girls have been waiting for this for so long. And we were fortunate, we were told, you know, we might not be able to get to the top. There's going to be a really long line, you know. And we timed it just right. After dinner, we hop over and there's no line. No line at the Eiffel Tower to go. We just hopped right up. It was a miracle.
Right, our tour guide said that that very rarely ever happens, so.
So we got everybody up, enjoyed leisurely time at the top. And then at the bottom, we could enjoy some snacks before going back to Eiffel Tower.
And if you don't think the Eiffel Tower is that tall, it's only a little smaller than Empire State Building. So it's pretty high.
It was really exciting. You were pretty kind. I was tickled to go to the top too. So then, we finished our time in Paris and we boarded a night train to Lyon and then switched trains to Rome. And there's our list of significant sites.
And you know what was interesting, even though we had French students, Spanish students, Latin students, you really didn't have anyone saying, "I liked one place better than the other." The vast majority came away saying, "I liked all of these places." So I thought that was interesting.
So this is a scene inside the cabin, the sleeping cabin of the train. I think at one point, they got 20 kids in one cabin.
Good thing we didn't take a picture of that.
No, no, but we brought together the two towns and the kids. We had eighth graders, we had senior, we had junior, we had a lot of tenth graders. And like Lane said, they're all like this group now is family. I was like, "You guys are my family this week. I don't want to lose anyone in my family. Let's all stay together." And they did, they were wonderful. They were so enthusiastic. No complaining. We had some long days, long walks. And really, they were just smiling the whole time.
I guess I was, you know, as a teacher and as a parent, I was really impressed with how engaged all of these kids were, even the eighth graders, you know, throughout the duration of the trip. You would think going to one more, you know, museum or one more statue, they would say, "Okay, I've had enough of this. I think I'll go back to the bus." But no, that was never the case.
They were engaging with people in the city and with the guides, asking questions, adding comments. It was wonderful, wonderful. And of course, we ate our way through Europe. Just ask anyone. Pantheon and cannolis, what a combination.
When we originally scheduled the trip, we were thinking we may be sacrificing something by only staying a couple of days in each country. But that wasn't the case. I think going to all three really added to the experience that everyone had, so.
Yeah, we have students now who want to take more than one language. We're really excited about that too. Especially after I learned I was saying, "Sit down," instead of "I'm sorry." We were one of the last groups to leave the Vatican that day. It was amazing just to see all the buildings surrounding us and how great they were and how we were able to experience and have Mr. Smeltzer and his students tell us, "What does this say in Latin here? What does it say?" And it was wonderful. It was really great. I wouldn't want to be with anyone else.
Well, that was it. We had the Spanish teachers for Spain. We had the French teacher for France and then we had the Latin teacher for Rome. So it really worked out quite well. We were never at a loss.
The last picture, last night, walking through Rome. And the kids didn't want to leave. They had a protest.
They had a sit-ist. Now that speaks volumes about how much they enjoyed the trip.
It was wonderful. So we want to report to you, it was a wonderful trip. Everyone came back who left. Everyone was in tip-top shape and we really appreciate your support, the parents, all of you in the community, to allow these trips to continue and also to support the languages at the schools, in the middle school and in the high school, so that our students can continue to stay at Montemoy and continue and have four years, have AP courses that we deserve to give our students, to attract them to our school and keep them here. It's very important. We weren't able to offer everything we should have this year. And we want to at least maintain what we have now in the future so we can continue to take trips like this and get the kids involved and excited about global learning opportunities. And they start right here at Montemoy if we can keep all of this going. So thank you very much.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you.
Could I just take a moment? David Sinis and my daughter, one of the fifth, I would just like the board to know that we appreciate what the teachers have done on their initiative, putting the trip together and taking care of our kids and everything, all of this. Thank you.
I just want to show you a little clip of it. I don't want to take too long, but Emily Greco made this movie. It's really cute. Remember, it's from a teenage standpoint, so it's different from what maybe Bob and I saw sometime. It's all good, all good. Just gotta get the music here. I don't have any sound, they don't realize. Music is so good, I wish I could put it on. Well, the music in the background is, the song she chose was "This is the Best Time of Our Lives." They stamped our passport in Germany. They're all excited. That was the only country. They were so sad because it's stamped anywhere else. They tried to sleep. So it's kind of neat to see the trip through their eyes. Now it's just day one. I know that you've been there a long time tonight, so we'll leave you with the link. We'll post the link for you. Thanks again. Thank you.
Great job. If you could get the music, it might be nice if one of these monitors at the high school in the corridor could be, could run it for a while, so all the other kids could be clearly jealous and feel good.
Oh, that's a good idea. You should give it to me while I put up in the monitors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Burkhead's going to put it on the Friday Focus as well.
Yeah, we can't run it on the monitor, so.
No, that's fine.
Thanks again.
All right, thank you. You'll see us again.
Our second item under reports and discussions, fiscal '16 budget discussion. Thank you. Do you have really anything more to add?
I think I have lulled everyone into a non-budget mode for a moment.
Assuming that's true, we'll move on to monthly financial report. Katie.
I'll wake you in a little bit. In your packets were your, the financials through January 31st. And at that time, we had, excuse me. Closed my packet. An unencumbered, unextended balance of just over 1.7% of the budget, or $537,000. The, we're right on track in terms of our expenditures. There aren't any surprises. We're, we have some challenges with snow removal, of course, and some of the additional supplies and things that we've had to purchase in some overtime. And the things that are still on my mind, so we still don't know yet what the impacts are in the FY '15 budget for the reductions proposed by Governor Baker. I believe around the same March 4th date that we get the FY '16 budget, we'll be getting some revenue dollars. The only, any changes to regional transportation, our charter school tuition reimbursements. The only solid number that we got thus far was the reduction in our kindergarten grant of just over $20,000, which pays for the salary of a kindergarten assistant. So we're, as part of the discussion yesterday, as Scott alluded to in his office about the FY '16 budget, we had to have some conversation about the '15 budget and to be cautious now, because, you know, whatever cuts they make, we'll be running out of time, because, you know, time is ticking away this fiscal year. So we'll hopefully by the next school committee, we'll have some solid numbers all around. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
So by, by our next meeting, we'll have some better numbers. What, you also earlier say probably around March 4th?
From what I understand.
About a week before.
Yes, yes. That's what I understand when the governor's budget is going to come out is on March 4th.
So can you spread that information out when you get it as opposed to, I'm sure you will?
I'll be happy to.
Be well in advance of the meeting.
Exactly, exactly.
Thanks, Katie. Subcommittee reports. Thank you for that summary, Bria. Superintendent's report, Montemoy Regional High School building update.
Just, I just wanted, we sort of started the public budget forum talking about the flood of the building, the building. This is actually, this is actually the second time something like this has happened where, and, yeah, and it appears to be that our, that we have 15 rooftop units. And I think there's, it's possible that there's a, some disconnect between how the programming of the rooftop unit is operating with the rooftop unit itself. So there, there's a water line that goes through these units. And when it gets cold outside, the command, the water line should be getting from its programming is to constantly move water so that the water doesn't freeze. But for whatever reason, now in two of these units, that command has stopped and the water has stopped and water, it's New England, it gets cold, has frozen and we've had, we've had a burst. The first time was, you know, was, was, we'll call it a minimal issue. It was a unit over the kitchen, so it came down into an area that has a floor with floor drains that, you know, so that, you know, it's, it was minimal. The last one, if we're looking up in the second window above us, where you see ceiling tiles. see ceiling tiles from this vantage point, there still would have been ceiling tiles. Everything in that room, that direction was on the floor. And, yeah, so that the unit up above it had frozen, a line burst, the water came down into that classroom, flooded over into the adjacent classroom, which appears to be slightly downhill from it. And, and the water found a way down into the video classroom that is behind us and into the television studio and some into the library, so that, so that was, yeah, I was walking through the video classroom on Tuesday morning needing galoshes and a raincoat because, you know, the water was coming out. Many of the computers that were in there were damaged, you know, I mean, water was literally coming into the computers. Yes, a lot of the equipment, though, was just exposed to some high humidity situations and, you know, this, you know, this, these spaces are still sort of under the contract. Um, so there's, you know, this is being resolved with insurance carriers, you know, this isn't a Montemoy Regional, uh, what's that?
I have pictures if anyone's interested.
Sure.
Just so gapless.
And, you know, so, so this is, this is currently being resolved by, you know, by insurance companies and you can imagine that the nature of this, that you'll have a, an engineer saying, "No, no, I programmed it right." It's the unit and the people with the unit saying, "No, no, it's not..." Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of this going on because the claim behind this is significant. And, you know, and we want to make sure that things get put back perfectly the way they were, that all the electronic equipment gets replaced so that the projector that we normally would be using for this meeting actually can have the image reach the screen, that, uh, that there's, there's damage to the wiring that goes to the projector. So it's, there's a lot of things that had gone, but, um, we, we had a company, Serpro came in, they did a great job of sucking up the water that was, that was in the spaces. Uh, you'll notice that there are some spaces that were cut in the drywall and that's so that they could send, you know, have fans sort of blow the moisture out and they had big dehumidifiers in here just sucking the moisture from, you know, from, so that, so that during the vacation week, you know, this went from a flood, you know, to, you know, to being thoroughly dried out. So it was great, you know, it was a great, you know, sort of effort. Um, our staff came in and did some last cleaning to get the spaces ready. So if you're up in the art classroom, you really couldn't tell there had been a flood. The only spaces that we really, um, aren't using and have off limits right now are the, the video classroom and the, and the TV studio and we're using the video classroom to, to have every, all the equipment that would be part of a, an insurance claim is being stored in there, catalogued, inventoried. Um, but the, you know, there's some, there's some classes that have been displaced into the, into the computer lab for that.
Is there any idea how long that's going to take to be resolved?
In terms of the insurance issue?
Well, and the replacement of the equipment?
It, it, it will likely, I, I think for some of, you know, for some of this, it may take the rest of the school year.
Yeah.
And, and one of the, you know, one of the things that we were really hoping to see is this was the week that we were having staff trained in the brand-new TV studio. Um, but now we have all of the equipment in the brand-new TV studio will get replaced. So, yeah, it, it took us this far into the year to get the equipment in place, so we'll likely have it here, you know, by the end of the year and then we'll have people getting trained in it this summer. So, you know, so for the students that were hoping to use that this year, you know, that's getting, you know, moved off into next.
That's my son's favorite class.
So over the upcoming months, about one-third of the carpet tiles in the space will, will get replaced. If you, if you walk around over towards the, the bookcases, you'll notice that, that the carpet tiles have slightly lifted up and I think they're starting to settle down a little bit, but, uh, you know, to control the volatile organics in a green building, the adhesive for each of these carpet tiles is water-based. And when you have, um, standing water sitting on water-based adhesive, it, it tends to lift, it tends to lift up. So, um, you know, so we, we want to keep the carpet tiles here in place until we can have somebody come in and replace, and replace them all, not pull up the tiles and have sort of sticky, you know, sticky substrate, you know, down below. We also have, this is, this is images of the darkroom. Uh, while you can now go into the darkroom, we, we have, the darkroom is sort of offline for the next probably month. Um, and the reason for that is the rooftop unit is still functioning, yes, but, but it, it, it's designed because of the darkroom to, to take all outside air and heat it before it sends it into the space and now is, is doing a partial outside air, but you, you need to sort of fully suck the air out of the darkroom and bring all outside air in or you have that sort of chemical smell start to permeate out of your darkroom into the spaces, the spaces upstairs. So we're not using the darkroom currently and that's about a month off again. Uh, and, and the, the part of the holdup there is there needs to be a resolution as to, uh, what went wrong in the unit and, you know, before the unit gets fully fixed and, uh, and then the circulate, the air circulation will continue. You can imagine there's also a lot of engineers working behind the scenes to go and figure out, okay, what's now happened twice, how do we not have this happen, you know, happen in, in other units?
As a member of the Subcommittee on the Building, I've learned a lot and a third of what I have and it's just so complex that the days of oil-fired boiler, i.e. Howich High School and a custodian who, with a wrench can bang it and all of a sudden, in our homes where we have a thermostat, we have one or we have six, whatever, this is so complex for a layman to sit and listen to. There are 14 or 15 of these huge units that are constructed by two or three different large national companies and then controlled by a software that is long-distance doing all of these various things, venting open and then heat and control. So it, it reminds me very much of every third day on the globe, you say, GM is recalling X number of thousands of cars and it's all these huge leaps into technology with, with cars, automobiles, that are so bells and whistles that, uh, with that comes the bad news that potentially you've got more stuff to all of a sudden, make a one cold night mistake and things freeze up. So, good news and bad news.
So to move from this to just another, um, item under, under my report, one of the middle school students, you know, had, had mentioned this, that we had an evacuation of the building, of the middle school building, the Friday, it was the Friday the 13th, if you'll figure, um, you know, right before, right before vacation. Um, and I just wanted to give you an update on, on what went, you know, what was behind that, you know, you know, the police, you know, how the police sort of moved, they moved forward on that. Um, the, you know, a call came, you know, a call came into the middle school that one of the, you know, one of the secretaries took and notified us and, you know, and it was enough of a concern for us to reach out immediately to, you know, to Chatham Police and to discuss with them the need to make sure that we had all of our students safe. Um, and, uh, and to kind of back up and give you a feel for how challenging this is these days. Um, and I, I know back, you know, back in my day, you know, potentially you had somebody, you know, goes to a payphone, you know, in the, in the hallway and makes a call. Well, you know, now you could go onto the internet and there are websites to make crank calls and you can go and, uh, I could record my message and then I could make it sound like I am an elderly, you know, you know, person, a woman, a man, or this, you know, so you can, you can modulate what the voice sounds like. You can go and tell it when you want the call to be placed. You can, you can program in what do you want the caller ID to go and read, what do you want it to say as, as the name? And hit send and, and out it goes into the ether. It's, it's entirely possible that, that that's how something like this, how something like this played out. So, you know, so, you know, I, I think some, you know, some parents that reached out to me were sort of concerned, you know, has, have the police caught the person who did it? It, it takes time because you, you know, we immediately, you know, while, you know, as soon as, as soon as the call came in and we had the police here, one of the police detectives was working with us and our phone provider to, you know, look at, okay, what are the phone numbers that came in at this time? And, and clearly one of them is coming from a, a fake number and then you have to go out and subpoena that internet service provider and, and slowly through subpoena after subpoena, work your way all the way down to someone's home internet provider and, you know, and, you know, the, the worry too is, yeah, I've experienced this too, is it, you know, it could come back to even be, you know, an internet provider on their cellphone or an internet provider at the school, you know, so, you, so you, it's, it's far more complicated than I think sometimes television drama makes it see. It's like, okay, 48 hours, this, this, this happened. So, um, this is on, it's an ongoing thing that the police are working with and we put some safeguards in place with, you know, with some documents that I've signed with the police and are working with Verizon to protect the school from something like this and if it were to happen, if it were to happen again. I cannot, you know, speak more highly about how our staff functioned during that event. I mean, to, to imagine having an entire school saying, okay, we're going to move the entire school from one building to another building and notify their parents and reunite an entire school with their parents and all of that happened in, you know, under 90 minutes. That, you know, the, you know, the, the staff really did a great job making that happen. You know, there were, there were some students, including my daughter, that were shaken by this and, and I appreciate the staff that were in the gymnasium, reaching out to those, you know, to those students and then we're making efforts to kind of connect them with their parents a little, you know, a little more quickly than, you know, than some of the line and, you know, so, you know, so, you know, I've gotten some, you know, some emails from parents just asking, well, why didn't you do X, Y, or Z? And, um, one of the big factors on that day is it was under 20 degrees outside. You know, you know, we could not evacuate the kids outside. They didn't have their coats. We couldn't send them home on the bus because they wouldn't have their coats or keys, you know, that we had to kick the kids out of the building and, you know, Sean Fleming and, you know, our, our custodial staff, you know, they went through every hallway to make sure the hallways were clear, the hallways were fine, got the kids onto the buses. I thought Cape Destinations did a great job of getting the buses here, or, you know, getting them, you know, all the buses. We had brought in all our buses, got all the kids out from, you know, from one building to the other. I mean, it, you know, consider the, the challenge that had to happen, uh, I, it couldn't have gone smoothly. There are some things that we want to work out with, you know, with us and Public Safety and we're having an after-action, you know, meeting in the upcoming, in the upcoming days to sort of reflect back on, you know, how did it go, what could we do better? Because this, this was one of our, you know, we had talked this year with Public Safety that we'd like to do an evacuation and evacuate to some other covered place. We had, we had thought that if we evacuated the middle school, that it would be on a sunny day and we could practice going down to the Chatham DPW garage. That's, that was the plan. Not that it was going to be the day that we'd have to practice it, that it was going to be under 20 degrees and cold and that we would need buses. And so, so this was, you know, I mean, I, you know, again, you know, it was, it was, you know, really comforting to know I could call, you know, the central office team, say, hey, I need you to, everybody head over to the high school and support them, you know, call the high school and say, okay, Janie, we've got a whole school coming at you. Be ready. And, uh, and, and they worked. So, I, you know, there, there were some challenges with traffic, but you're going to have that. You can imagine, send out an email to families, come pick up your child. It's going to create a traffic jam for, for a moment and, and while, you know, while folks needed to wait, you know, maybe 25 minutes, half an hour, you know, the, the key at the end of the day is everybody got home safe and, and that's the important thing. Um, on a, on a completely different note, I mentioned this during the budget hearing. Uh, we had offered an early retirement incentive. We've had 20 of our, of our staff members have signed up and elected for this, which I think can greatly help us in the out budget years. I, I've also mentioned that, um, you know, that it, it's not as much help as you might imagine the first budget year. One of the things that you have in a contract is, is sick day, you know, that you, you have to buy back the sick days that, that people have amassed. That's a really big number when you have, you know, when you have 20, when you have 20 teachers. So, so, um, you know, while it doesn't help us much this year, when you don't, when you're not buying back the sick days, when you're not paying out the incentive, when you're taking salaries that were $70,000 and you're, have new folks coming in at $50,000 times 20, it's, it's a big savings to the district and it will really help us in terms of that long-range, you know, fiscal, you know, fiscal stability. Uh, the last thing I have for you in your packets, I have a draft of the, of the Montemoy Regional Calendar that I'd like to, that I'd like to share, that I'd like to share with you. And there are, there are four things about this that, that I'd like to kind of point out and, and just vet with you. Um, the first, the first one, uh, by contract, we can have a pre-Labor Day start. So this has us, this has us starting with teachers showing up before Labor Day on a Wednesday and a Thursday. Um, and then there's the long Labor Day weekend for everyone of the students showing up with us on the Tuesday following Labor Day. And, and one of the things we've heard this year from, you know, from a number of parents is that they were heading back to work on the Tuesday after Labor Day, but their students weren't heading back to school for two more days. And I think this hopefully sinks family calendars and school, you know, and school calendars more. The other thing that is different about this calendar is that it has us going to school on Columbus Day. And there's a reason that the administrative team felt that that's important and it's, and this is not a slight to the Italian-Americans or, or, you know, pro-Native-Americans. It's, it's, it's that, um, it's that Columbus Day, which is October 12th, would create, you know, it would create this sort of two-days-off-school kind of, you know, right in the middle, right in the middle of October. And one of the things we're concerned about is how do we get momentum happening in classrooms? You know, how do we, how do we keep and sustain momentum? Um, so, you know, so by having school on Columbus Day, and many districts do, many districts don't, um, yeah, it's not one of those days that you have to not have school. It, it allows us to have more momentum happening at the beginning of the school year. On that same vein of momentum, uh, we had in past years, and I think some of the history had been that the, the days before Thanksgiving were conference days and they were these half-days happening at the elementary schools and middle school. And it's taking those two days and, and sort of spreading them out in November so that, so that the days going into Thanksgiving are, they're full, you know, they're full-class days. Again, trying to maintain the momentum of learning in the, in the calendar. And, and the last thing in this is, is that it, it has us look at exams differently at the high school. There, you know, there has been a, a, a week where you have exams happening that there's half, you know, half-days at the high school and this has us potentially looking at the exams differently for the high school, that, that the exams happen in classes and maybe aren't at the long exams that they, that they've done. So it has, it has full-school days, not half-school days happening at that, at that transition between, that transition between semesters. So those are the, the four things that really look different about this than last year's calendar.
I just have a question. And that is that I understand kindergarten not arriving the same day as everyone else because they need extra attention, but why do they start several days after, or two days after instead of one day after the regular operation?
Quest Sam.
One of the things that we, we...
One of the things that we, we did in both schools this year was gave the teachers an opportunity to meet with the child and the family. So let's say there was a half-hour schedule, basically a parent conference, get to know the child, get to know how to communicate with the parents. And in order to do that with your whole class, you needed two days to do that. And we, in, in Howard, which we used to have three days to do that, and we also did a screening. We moved the screening to June, or end of, beginning of June, end of May. And that's taken part of the day off. We used to combine the two. So this past year, we actually piloted both schools having that conferencing time, and recognized that in two days, we could do that. And one of the things that's been a challenge by having three days traditionally, where the kindergartens didn't come in, they came in on Monday, was that first week was a full, solid week. And that was always taxing for the children. To have them coming on a Friday, the excitement's there. You met, you come, before the week's over, you get a taste of the bus runs. And at the same time, it gives us an opportunity to welcome the kindergarten children with, on their own day, before the following week. And then, then it's a full week. So.
Any other?
I have a couple of questions. The, on the conferences, so the 3rd and 12th, is that for the elementary and middle school are both being held on the 3rd and the 12th?
It would, yes.
Yeah. And would that be, did you say that that was happening all day?
So they're, they're-
Or would it be a half-day?
They're half, so it's, the students go half-day?
Yep.
And then there's conferences in the second half of the day.
Okay. And that would accommodate as many? Because weren't there three days before?
There's two days in this, in this year's, part of this year's schedule, calendar. Long day.
And the early releases seem a little more erratic this year, and I guess that's because of the holidays that are on Wednesdays? Like, they're not, they don't seem to fall as much into every other?
It's still a, it looks like it, but I think-
Okay.
It's, it's, it's the same number. It, they, we try to do every other until you have that, a holiday-
I see.
-that show up in there.
People break, it kind of gets off with their lives.
I did notice, just because you said that, that, so the 11th is Veterans Day, there'll be no school. And then we're expecting the kids to come back for half-day, and be off the next half-day. So do you think that maybe that a lot of parents might take their kids out for both days, since it's only a half-a-day? We'll, we'll have to wait and see.
I don't know.
Okay.
I have just two questions. One to follow up on the, the half-days. Why space them instead of back-to-back?
Again, it's, it's just trying to not have two lulls, or trying to, trying to spread it out, you know, spread it out a little bit. That was, that was just the, we were, we were going back and forth on, did we put them, you know, together, or spread them out? And I felt that we'd like to look at spreading.
It might be better for the teachers. Give a little, more of an opportunity for parent for other conferences.
It also, it, it also tries to move it a little bit, and it, granted, it's, it's only a couple of weeks, but move it a little earlier in the year to give the parents a bit of feedback earlier.
And then also, what is the history behind Good Friday? Is it, is that still contractual?
I, I, I think it's, it's more, it's, it's more historical, and I, I, I think it's a, it's different community, different community decisions. Also, one of the reasons we kind of, we, we discussed Good Friday as, as an admin team, and, and looked at that, that there's not really a break in March.
This, this, this year, it looks good.
It actually, it, you know, at least, at least in this year, it, it helps create-
In 2016, it's good. In 2015, it's too close to equal break.
Yes.
One time had it, one time didn't.
Chatham had it? Chatham had it. Chatham, Morris, Howard, didn't.
Right.
There's a, there's a big discussion on Good Friday on, you know, amongst school districts statewide.
Similar, Columbus Day, I'm sure.
Although I think Columbus Day is far less charged.
Except for Kate, who points out, she likes Columbus Day because you don't have to buy anybody anything.
Good Friday, you know, happens.
I just want to point out that I have not given up on my, my desire to see the vacation schedule change. But I won't bring it up at this time for this year.
We just go back.
And I think what you're, what, what you're, what you're saying is that if, if April Vacation happened in a different week, is that, is that-
One or the other, either February or April.
And, and I know there, Martha's, you know, Martha's Vineyard deliberately does that. And of course, they're, a different school district given the, the geography. It, you know, it, it gives families a break. You know, if you travel, you know, when, when all the schools in Massachusetts take a break on the same week, you know, the airlines go and price things, and it, it definitely helps families and makes travel far more affordable if one of those was on a different week. It does create some challenges for some of our staff if they have children in one school system that's not doing that, and, or a spouse in, in one school system that's not doing that, where, you know, where, you know, your, your children are heading off on vacation, which are not. That may be a good thing too.
I would say a greater number of people are benefit, would benefit from the change than would be harmed by the change.
Well, on that note, I was going to invite someone to head a motion.
I would like to end the session, discuss the problem.
I don't, I don't think we need to.
I didn't, I didn't plan on it.
I suggested that we have a workshop at some point between now and the 11th, so we could kind of, you know, get into some of this stuff. I think that would be a helpful idea.
Get it in the budget.
Yes. No, no, I, we have two separate plans. Two separate plans.
A, a good idea, Sharon. Why don't we ask Scott and Katie to kind of look at your calendars for a quote-unquote workshop block of time that would be independent of our regular next meeting, but prior to the 11th, that we could all meet with a cup of coffee and then a public session, and have that one item agenda topic. Okay? Now I will entertain-
Do it, Jared.
I'll take your second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.